Okay.
Good evening, welcome to the sixteenth meeting of the year. Today is November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Alyssa, can you please read the publication?
In compliance with chapter two thirty-one Public Law of nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the Borough website, and the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River.
Roll call.
Mayor Gindy.
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Here.
Councilman DeSantis is not here. Councilman DeZemian.
Here.
Councilman Janikopoulos.
Here.
Councilman Gertensky.
Here.
Council President Seula.
Here.
Please stand for a salute to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. We had one presentation today. Unfortunately, we are not going to be hearing it today. For the agenda session, Andrea, there's three first readings. If you could go over them for me, please.
Absolutely, Mayor. Two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-nine, that is just the financial agreement for twenty-five Main Street. For two thousand and twenty-five, thirty, that is a rental properties amendment to your rental properties chapter. It updates the registration for landlords and, and updates the applications. And two thousand and twenty-five, thirty-one, that's an update, an increase to the fees for rental inspections.
Okay. Thank you. Alyssa, can you please read two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-nine?
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-nine, in ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, adopting the financial agreement under NJSA forty A colon twenty dash one at SEC, and authorizing tax exemption and payment in lieu of taxes with Twenty-Five Main Street, South River Urban Renewal LLC.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-nine on its first reading by title only, and a clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on December the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven P M. By video conference via Zoom, we're in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seula, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes.
Alyssa, two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-five, thirty, in ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter two sixty-two entitled Rental Properties.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty on its first reading by title only, and a clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on December the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven P M. Be by video conference via Zoom. We're in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seula, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas. Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes.
Alyssa, two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-one, please.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-five, thirty-one, in ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter one fifty-five of the Borough Code entitled Fees.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-one on its first reading by title only, and a clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on December the fifteenth, at seven P M, two thousand and twenty-five, by video conference via Zoom. We're in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seula, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas. Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes.
Thank you. We're gonna go into reports. Justin, CME.
Thank you, Mayor. A brief update on the capital project in South River. For the two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four local aid programs, our office completed, the contractor has completed our office's punch list, and we have requested final inspection from the D O T. For the two thousand and twenty-three local transportation project, our office submitted an incidental limits modification to the D O T for review. We're waiting on, to hear from them before we go out to bid. The two thousand and twenty-five local aid program, our office is continuing with the design work. We expect to have that completed by next month. Uh, two thousand and twenty-five electrical substation, project bids have been received, and the contract we've recommended for award in the amount of one hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred forty dollars to Risa Service of Farmington, New Jersey. The D E P Stormwater Assistance, our survey department is currently working on this year's portion. And for the two thousand and twenty-five local aid, we have submitted a grant application. That's it.
All right, thank you. Counsel, anything for CME? Uh, Joe, CFO?
Thank you. A couple of resolutions. First one is a resolution suspending parking meters from Thanksgiving to Christmas. This is the resolution we do every year. It'll be enforced again the day after Christmas. Second resolution is a chapter one fifty-nine resolution for two new grants. First one is a twenty-one thousand dollar grant from the Police Department for enforcement, and then the other one is that million dollar grant when Assemblyman Stanley and Karivija came. So now we're putting it, you guys approve the resolution, we'll send it to the state, and then you can spend. And the last one is a resolution certifying the two thousand and twenty-four audit. Uh, I wanna thank all the employees. We had no recommendations and a clean opinion, which is the best you can get. Uh, the orders did go through every department, you know, um, construction code, court, clerk, everybody, and checked a lot of bills and payroll and everything, and no recommendations, which is great. So all the employees deserve a lot of credit for that. That's it.
Counsel, anything for, uh, Joe? All right, Fire Chief Smith?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, year-to-date, from January through October, we've reached four hundred and fifty-eight calls. Currently have two units that are out of service. They're only gonna be used as bus issues right now. We have engine five that has issues with the primer, and engine two, which is still under warranty, that has issues with the pump that has been taken care of by Campbell Supply. All reports are taken care of, but we have no issues. I wanna personally thank all the members of our department, as well as our county partners, for coming to the Will, uh, to Willard Green, this, uh, fire that we've had. We're very fortunate that we had the right time and the right amount of people to come and extinguish the fire as quickly as possible.
All right, thank you. Counsel, anything for the Fire Chief? No. Fire Chief let the fire department know they did a remarkable job with that, uh, takedown of the fire on Fifty Willet. Thank you. Andrea.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alyssa?
Nothing tonight.
Art?
Mayor, just a couple of things. First of all, everybody sees that the railroad-type project's moving very well. It's almost at Wilcox already. But, uh, don't be overconfident, because weather's gonna come into play, and hopefully, uh, it does go smooth, and we get past Jackson Street, and then we have to figure out, and the P D is taking care of that, how they'll handle from Jackson to Ferry. A couple of things on the, um, resolution for tonight. Three eighteen is a award of a contract to C D M Smith. This is for, uh, a new building for Well Five and the, um, closing of the Sistern, which will be probably done first quarter of next year. Three twenty-one, award to V M G Group for roof repair. That's a brand-new roof for the water treatment plant, and a repair of the last section of the police station. Three twenty-three.
Bless you.
Is emergency contract for pumping services. Once again, the residents of South River haven't paid attention. We removed thirteen cubic yards of solids out of the tile yard pumping station. It damaged both pumps. Uh, they still have to bring another truck in to clean out the second line to the second pump, and that's costing the Borough twenty thousand dollars for the repair. Uh, that's all I have. Again, you know, the people just, you know, things that are supposed to go in the toilet, put them in, things that aren't, please don't. Not gonna go into what the solids are, but please be careful, because it does damage our equipment. We've spent a lot of money on the two pump stations in the last couple of years, replacing the grinders, and, and now we have to replace two pumps that we replaced three years ago. So, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Anything for it? Like to open up to the public, five minutes, state your name.
For reports.
Oh, sorry about that.
He's really kind of wishy.
Uh, Councilman Gertensky?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, there's an old, there's an old saying too, also about those, the pumping station and everything too, is if you haven't eaten it, don't flush it.
Yep.
Ah, good one.
Um, aside from that, it's a little bit later in the month and everything too. Uh, I can only recommend that you look at the website for the Office on Aging and everything too. Uh, tomorrow, of course, the office will be closed. Same on Thanksgiving Day. There are a few trips and everything, but usually you sign up for anything with the Office on Aging at the beginning of the month. So, that's all I really have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ballas?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. Uh, South River Community Thanksgiving Dinner, two thousand and twenty-five. The Food Bank is in partnership with the R M R, C J Enterprises, Saint Peter and Paul Orthodox Church. The South River Fire Department and Women's Auxiliary will once again be hosting a community Thanksgiving dinner. If you live in South River and are in need of a hot cooked Thanksgiving meal for you and your family, then join us between twelve noon and one thirty P M on Thursday, November twenty-seventh, at Saint Peter and Paul's Church Hall on Nine Jeffrey Avenue. Dinner will be served at twelve thirty. You must R S V P by the twentieth. I know these are around town, but if you can't get down there to get one, just give a call to the Food Bank at seven three two two three eight three zero two zero. So again, the, um, R S V P date is the twentieth. And the other one I have from the library, they're gonna be hosting a holiday concert with Jay Daniels on Saturday, December thirteenth, at two P M. This is one that you must register for. He has been there before. He is a gifted vocalist, a pianist. He's also a musical historian, and he will be singing a lot of different holiday songs, not just Christmas, but to cover the season. And again, registration opens on Thursday, November thirteenth. And again, go through the, um, library website. They have things going on from now right until the end of the year. Quite a few, uh, good, um, presentations and things. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman DeZemian.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, thank you to the crew of the TV thirty-five Neil and Sal for recording the concert at the Imperial Music Center last week. It will be available soon on the Borough website. Uh, currently meeting with different organizations to go over their needs for next year's budget. The project blog on the Borough's website continues to be updated on the status of ongoing projects, and recreation, wrestling, and basketball registration is currently open. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Janikopoulos?
Uh, yes, Mayor. So tomorrow is Veterans Day, so the Borough will be closed. So if you have your, uh, garbage, it gets picked up on Tuesday. This week, that will be picked up on Friday. So that gets picked up Friday, if your garbage goes out tomorrow. And also Thanksgiving, the, uh, Borough will be closed, so if your garbage gets picked up Thursday, put it out the day before on Wednesday. The Thursday garbage will be picked up the day before Thanksgiving. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President?
Tuesday.
Yeah, put it out for Wednesday.
Just Tuesday for Wednesday, yeah.
Thank you. Now we're gonna open up to the public. Five minutes, state your name and your address.
Uh, Mayor, Ed Trager, Forty-four Ferry Street. So at the last council meeting, uh, you mentioned something about we're getting a parking deck. Uh, where is that?
I said that's one of the anticipated projects for next year, and hopefully into the following year. Where is that?
Yeah.
I'll let you know when we announce it then.
So you don't know where it's gonna be?
I have a pretty good idea, but I-
You have a pretty good idea?
Pretty good idea.
Is it just like you and like your developers, like in a secret meeting doing it, or has it been like a, has our engineer or planner, has anybody, it's been planned?
No, it's me talking to the developer to see if he's interested in doing what he wants to do in our town. So when it does come to our town, I promise you, I promise, you'll be the first one to be told.
So there's no, there hasn't been any plan or survey or study presented to the council about a parking deck in the downtown area?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet. But Mr. Trager, I promise, you're gonna be entertained by the, the story that we're gonna give you.
I'd be surprised at that, because I'm on the Economic Development Commission, and nothing comes to us.
Yeah.
I mean, nothing at all comes to me.
Economic Development Commission's about business. You should know that.
You guys like, like, increased the red tape and the fees for the downtown businesses. Nothing comes. So are there any plans to put, uh, like any holiday decorations or banners, like on Washington Street or in the municipal parking lot for this year?
I'd have to talk to Age about that. I would say, yes, there's probably gonna be something going up.
Yes, there's probably, or, I mean, it's not too far away. Usually Thanksgiving, everything goes up.
Whatever word you like to use, I'm okay with it.
Do you have the money for that?
We have something there.
So we're gonna get holiday decorations in the municipal parking lot this year?
Are you gonna decorate your store, sir? Are you gonna decorate your store?
I always do.
You do? I look forward to seeing it.
I know you don't come downtown, because, you know, last, last council meeting, you said that downtown was a ghost town, which, if it's, it's always aggravated me, that there's been members of the, the mayor and council over the decades that like to, like, badmouth the downtown. There's a lot of businesses that are open right now. I mean, you can count like eleven, twelve, fifteen businesses. Of course, you can't expect lawyers and accountants to be open until midnight, right? Because you were saying we're gonna be cruising the town at midnight and enjoying every- But there's a lot of businesses downtown, and it's always aggravating that, like, the mayor or some other council members, well, you, and none of you guys, but in the past, you don't really have anything good to say about downtown. You know, and a lot of the problems that are downtown have come from, it hasn't come from the people that are running the business down there, but you guys like to complain. So it'd be nice if you're a little bit more positive about the businesses that are there, as opposed to, we hate the businesses, and man, we can't wait until we build a new one. So it'd be nice if you can get some holiday decorations, you know, in Washington Street, in the municipal parking lot. I mean, I know they're scattered all over the town. I don't know why. It'd be nice if it was down there, then maybe you could stop complaining, you know, that the downtown looks bad, because we decorate all the time. If you don't know that, it's because you're not down there. I noticed we got some new signs downtown. No parking on Main Street from two to six. I did notice that we still have a bunch of rusted signs, like from the Industrial Commission, and South River's Veteran Friendly on the bridge. I don't know why these rusty signs are still there. Makes the town look like they're your signs. Can you take them down? I mean, we don't have a Welcome to South River sign, but at least we can not have rusty, old, worn-out signs on the bridge, you know? I noticed we don't have any, like, public parking signs to direct customers to the parking lot. We don't have any signs in the municipal parking lot saying, uh, you know, park here, park there, don't park here for the permits. So maybe, you know, you can make it easier for the customers to come downtown, as opposed to just complaining. You know, maybe do your part. When I say your part, I mean the governing body. Not necessarily you, although you're kinda the spearhead here. You know, set a good example. Say, hey, we've got some properties, we're fixing them up, we're decorating them, it's well-signed. We're doing our part, you do your part. Because I think if you look downtown, a lot of businesses are open. A lot of businesses do their part, and we're kinda waiting for you guys to kinda come along and help us out, or at least do your part. I mean, you know, it's kinda discouraging, you know, to like have a, a store and across the street, there's a junkyard. You know, Age and the guys do a fantastic job coming downtown, cleaning up, cutting weeds, and yet you got like broken-down fencing from other property owners.
Sorry, our time's up.
Maybe if you guys could do your part, it'd be good. I know twenty-five minutes, hey, I mean, fifty-five minutes, you like cutting the people off, because, you know, you don't wanna hear too much, but all right, so maybe do your part, stop badmouthing us, and if there's any information, maybe you can forward it to the Economic Development Commission, so we can-
Sure. Look forward to it.
Participate.
I look forward to it. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, Council. Um, I'm Reverend Jimmy Denarski. I live at one fifty Jackson Street. I'm the Associate Pastor at Tabernacle Baptist Church in South River. So thank you for this opportunity to speak. Uh, I'm not really here as just a pastor today, but I'm here as someone who lives in the community. I wanna talk on two brief topics, uh, both that involve both faith and community care. The first one, there's this huge need in South River right now, uh, for the people with food. I know the Food Bank has been doing an amazing job. I just want to offer our services, because we also have a food pantry, and I would like to be able to have you guys, as a, a board, uh, possibly send people our way to help them out as well. It's a struggle for everyone right now. Things are getting really bad, and we just wanna be part of the help in the community. Uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about is that if there is anything that Tabernacle Baptist Church can do for our community, please let us know. Uh, we would be willing to help clean things. I could get people together and do any kind of outreach for civic or just outreach for the community. We wanna be part of the community. We want to be more active in this community. We live here, this is our family, and we just wanna take care of everything.
Wait, I wanna just ask him, the, the ecumenical-
Thanksgiving service.
Thanksgiving, that's the night before, at?
Corpus Christi.
Corpus Christi.
Corpus Christi.
Yes.
Reverend, can you send me that information for the Food Bank?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I could probably post, put it on our website.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? First call? Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't follow that other guy. I don't even know where downtown is. Where's downtown?
That's good, that's good.
I'm Regina, again, from Loving Hands Carers.
How are you?
Good, good. I'm gonna give all you guys a little booklet for a little reading, a light reading. I just wanna say, when I came to this town in two thousand and twenty, I think we tried to open during COVID. Been here almost five years. I came to this town with twenty volunteers looking to help this community. I came to town with money in my pocket. That's gone. I've done what I could. I have love in my heart to help you guys and help this community get this under control. Can't do it. I just, I can't, I can't do it without help. Begging you guys to come to the rescue and see what we do, why we do it, how many adoptions we've had, which is well over two hundred, that are off your streets. I need help from, do we have an animal control officer?
Yes, we do.
Know who she is?
Claudine.
Think I might know. Right?
Yes.
So we had a problem here in, in the pack, and I'm just gonna briefly tell you that in August, the end of August, while I was on vacation, my phone blew up. There was a kitten found in South River with an eye infection on the street. Animal control didn't come. They called other animal control officers from other boroughs or whatever. Someone finally came, and not from South River, to take this kitten. They brought it to Garden State Veterinary Hospital, and they said, just put her to sleep. We don't know what to do with it. I never got a call. Our animal control officer never called me and said, can you take this kitten? It has an eye infection. Eye infections gross me out, but all it is is ointment on their eye, and they're fine in three days. But everybody was willing, was not willing to step up. And the doctor at Garden State says, I'm not putting this kitten to sleep for an eye infection. It's ridiculous. So she took the kitten home. I know this because my daughter is the doctor.
All right, you said this-
That's why she told me.
When did this happen?
August twenty-fourth.
I will look into this.
You can also look into, when people call the non-emergency number, they ask for an animal control officer to come out and look at a sick cat or get a kitten off the street, they're told, that's not what animal control does. I've gotten emails from people that say that. They don't know where to go. They don't know who to call. I'm inundated. I'm approved, was that Mr. Trager that owns a hardware store? Okay, now I know who he is. I was approved when I opened this. He was on the board for seven to nine cats at any given time. I have nine cats and kittens in there now. I have four in foster that are being bottle-fed, because they're found, and I have fifteen waiting to come in. I can't do it. I don't have the room, I don't have the food, I don't have the, I don't have the money to do this anymore. I'm about a hundred thousand dollars in the hole, and that's mine. That doesn't count donations or anything else. I have included my bills for you, to look at what we're paying out in medical bills, to help people in this community, to get them spayed and neutered, to get them vaccinated, or just take them. And all I'm getting is grief, that I don't do, I don't do enough. I had one woman, I read you that, that thing, she says, why do you call yourself a rescue if you don't rescue? Because I wouldn't take her two cats, because I couldn't. This, this is, it's just not fair to me. I feel like I'm, I'm coming in here five days a week, and I'm beating my head against a wall. And I don't know, I don't know if you guys can do anything, but I'm the only hope you have.
All right, well, let me look, I'm gonna look into the August twenty-fourth. I will reach out to you tomorrow. I will also stop by tomorrow just to see what your facility looks like.
Well, I came in today, sir. I live forty minutes away.
Well, I will see you tomorrow.
I'll be in tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
But please, just, just read this. I'm not asking for you guys to fund it. I'm not asking for sympathy. I'm begging for help. Any kind of help, and we help everybody. I'm going to that, the pastor's food bank, because my car is full. That's what we do. Pull the tags off the Christmas trees every year. I go up to Newark and I get a hundred and forty-four cases packed in my car of food. I only have one arm I can use. And I give that out to those people in need in this area, because I know that they can't afford it. And what's the alternative? If I don't take money out of my pocket or go to Newark and get something for them, they're gonna surrender their cats to me, or they threaten to just leave them outside.
Right.
That's not fair to me. And I don't take well to threats. I really don't, because I, if I can't help you, I can't help you, period. But I need the animal control officer's help. I need the police department's help to stop telling them that.
I will reach out to them, Regina.
So, please do that.
I sure will. Thank you. I'll see you tomorrow.
But I'm giving you booklets. I made them all up. It's okay, it's fine.
Anyone else from the public? First call, second call?
Motion to close public?
Second.
Motion by Council President Seula, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Can't fall asleep tonight, is that? Thank you, ma'am.
Alyssa, can you please read Consent Resolutions, uh, two thousand and twenty-five dash three fourteen to three thirty, please?
Or as Resolution two thousand and twenty-five oh one authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it as hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions two thousand and twenty-five three fourteen to two thousand and twenty-five three thirty. Three fourteen, authorizing the requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of school monies. Three fifteen, temporary suspension of parking meters from November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five to December twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Three sixteen, certify the two thousand and twenty-four audit. Three seventeen, authorizing the purchase of a vehicle lift for D P W. Three eighteen, awarding a contract to C D M Smith for professional services. Three nineteen, insertion of any special item of revenue in the budget. Three twenty, resolution to appoint James Stewart as full-time dispatcher. Three twenty-one, authorizing purchasing contract with V M G Group for roof repairs. Three twenty-two, approving a grant application for water main improvements. Three twenty-three, authorizing an award for emergency contract to Pumping Services Incorporated. Three twenty-four, authorizing the receipt of bids for a lease of a portion of the property located at thirty-nine Causeway Street. Three twenty-five, award contract to Risa Services LLC for the two thousand and twenty-five electrical substation maintenance. Three twenty-six, authorizing a stipend for certain Office on Aging Grants. Three twenty-seven, authorize certain utility refunds. Three twenty-eight, authorizing change order number two. Three twenty-nine, accept October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, regular and executive session minutes. Three thirty, authorize the bills and claims list.
Move the resolutions.
Motion by Council President, uh, sorry, Councilwoman Ballas.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gertensky.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes, with a three thirty abstention from twenty-five dash zero two seven eight eight.
Onto council comments. Councilman Gertens, uh, Janikopoulos?
Uh, yeah, Mayor. So this Thursday, we have a Environmental Shade Tree Commission meeting down at, uh, forty-eight Washington Road, down at the Borough Building. It starts at six thirty. Uh, if anyone is interested in joining us for environmental or shade tree commission meeting, um, that's going on this Thursday. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilman DeZemian?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the next concert at the Imperial-
The next concert at the Imperial Music Center is scheduled for December seventh, Sunday, at two PM, and Saint Peter and Paul Church on Lighted Avenue will be having a Christmas concert on December fourteenth at three PM. It's open to the public, it's free. Come out and listen to the choir there, saying they do it each year, it's very nice, and they have little refreshments afterwards. Thanks to all our veterans, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ballas?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'd also like to thank all our veterans, our Councilman, Mr. Krasinski here, being one of them, a few members of my family that are no longer with me. They both served, one in the Army and one in the Air Force, and to my friends whose sons and daughters have served, I'd like to thank them. And we will not be back until after Thanksgiving, so have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. That's all.
Councilman Krasinski?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers for all that they do for us in the town, which sometimes they're very well appreciated. Our DPW does an excellent job of keeping the town clean. Seems to be an ever-ending job for them. Our police, our fire, they're constantly vigilant on anything else that comes up. Of course, Veterans' Day is coming upon us tomorrow, and Thanksgiving, which are two holidays where the offices will be closed. I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays, as far as that goes. It's getting dark. Be aware, there's still children out there on the streets yet. It's getting colder, so they'll be tended to stay inside a bit more. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. EDC meeting will be held on the nineteenth, be the last EDC meeting for the year, so anybody wishing to attend, be at the Fifty-Five Reed. I want to thank all our veterans, Jim, everybody, for a job for protecting us and for just manning this country and keeping it safe. That's the biggest thing. Thank you. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you. All right, so if you've noticed throughout the town, South, the Police Department is one of them, I know the Helping Hands on Whitehead Avenue, as well as the Drizzle Drip, they have some artwork that's been done, and the artwork has been done by a young lady by the name of Sabina Park. This is her job. She enjoys doing this. She's beautifying South River as you see it throughout the town. So you should reach out to her if you ever like anything done. Main Street roadwork, I know it's going fairly quick. It's not over yet, but I know there's been a lot of residents complaining about road closures, traffic, a lot of cars, just bear with it. This is what we expected. So if you have any issues, please feel free to reach out to the Police Department, or for that matter, any of us, and we could try to help you as much as we can. In regards of Main Street, as one of our residents today spoke, yes, you go down Main Street today, yes, there are some stores that are open, but it's not what it should be. You're looking for a lot of traffic. You're looking for people that are going to keep your Main Street alive past five o'clock. Most of your stores, unfortunately, are closed. So we are trying to do our best, when it comes down to talking to developers, to bring them into our town, and it's working fairly smooth so far. You have three projects already underway. We are working on quite a few other projects. Until it's set in stone, we're not going to promise the world to the town. You know how that works. So yes, Mr. Trager, I look forward to seeing you at the next council meeting. Veterans' Day is upon us. Mr. Krasinski? Can't thank you enough. I can't thank the vets, I can't thank Mr. Donato, I know you've been part of the Navy. I can't thank you all for what you have done for this country and what you continue to do as of today. Tomorrow, this, this Thanksgiving upon us as well. Happy Thanksgiving to all. Remember that there are people in need. Please reach out. It's getting colder outside. Please check on your elderly. I know it's not easy. Just knock at that door, just make sure that everybody's doing well. Other than that, we are going to go into closed session. We are not going to act on anything, so you have, you could leave if you like, you could hang out, it's up to you.